We'll call our workshop meeting to order. Thank you very much for attending. We're going to start with roll call.
Madam President, all are present.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please stand. We have Mr. Lyde in the audience. He's going to lead us.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda, we have consent. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, at this point in time, we're going to suspend our workshop meeting and open a hearing to allow for public input regarding the proposed budgets. So, meeting has been suspended. We're allowing public input regarding the proposed 2014 budgets, the three-year capital projects plan fund, and the 12-year bus replacement plan. Back in August 26, Mr. McMichael presented their proposed 2014 budgets, the three-year capital projects fund plan, and the 12-year bus replacement plan. On September 9, the Board discussed these proposals and then authorized the administration to advertise for a public hearing. At this time, Mr. McMichael, do you have any comments you'd like to share?
No, I do not.
Okay. Well, then, at this time, I'll offer members of the public an opportunity to make comments regarding the three different plans that we will be hopefully approving in the near future. We will be open for a minimum of one minute, so feel free to jump up and make a comment if necessary. October break starts on Friday. I hope you have a nice time with your families. Thursday for some who might be a butler. Twenty-five more seconds. A minute's a long time to be silent. Seeing that there are no comments, we're going to close the hearing. And with that, we'll resume our Board Workshop. First item for discussion is Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. The administration representatives met with the Carmel -- representatives from the Carmel Clay Bus Drivers Association on a number of occasions late in the summer and early this fall. We have come to an tentative agreement. The agreement proposes a 1% increase to the daily rate schedule. Our bus drivers are all paid on a daily rate for their so-called regular routes. They're then -- they have some hourly rates for which they're paid for field trips and other spatial types of transportation. The agreement also proposes a 1% increase in those hourly rates and then the elimination of Step One. They currently have a six -- or seven-step schedule, and the proposal is to eliminate the first step, thus providing them with a six-step schedule which is consistent with other support staff schedules. This agreement is well within the range that the Board has already approved for other support staff members. So, we would -- at our next meeting, we'll bring this back and propose action on it.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. Open for discussion. Wow, we're quite bunched today. Okay. Well, thank you very much, Roger. We look forward to you bringing this back to us. If we have any questions in the meantime, we will email those to you. Next, we have the proposed course changes for 2014-15. We turn to Dr. Dudley.
Great, thank you. In order to make sure that we are providing our students with the most challenging course of study, each year, we annually review our course of study for our students. And before you, I have the proposed courses that we are proposing for high school and middle school. We have several new courses proposed to include, at the high school, IB computer science, IB business management, the Advanced Placement Capstone Program, Advanced Science Materials Chemistry, HUBR II. And then, at the middle school, we are proposing changes to courses, Digital Learning One and Digital Learning Two, to replace our Keyboarding One and Keyboarding Two.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dudley. Open for discussion. Mrs. Freed.
Could you give us just a little bit more about this AP Capstone Program and exactly what the seminar Year One and Research Year Two are leading to?
Yes. The AP Capstone project or program is a new program that Carmel High School was invited to participate in out of 100 schools across the country. It's a pilot program, but basically, it's a culminating program for students that are taking AP courses. And the students in the Year One, their junior year, they would participate in the seminar, and it would combine information from a variety of different AP courses, and so it could be out of humanities courses, or math courses, or science courses. And they would really develop that understanding where they integrate that knowledge. And then, in the senior year, that would go into the research where they would actually conduct a research project or a senior thesis, per se, through AP. And if they take these two courses in conjunction with at least four AP courses as well, they would be designated and receive an AP diploma at the end of this program.
I have a question to piggyback. Are they trying to -- is it a almost mirroring what the IB program is? Is that their competition? Is that what their --
I believe it's -- I believe it's their answer to IB, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there a cost associated with the program?
No, other than the students, the training costs for training the teachers, and then also the cost for the students to participate in the AP testing.
I have to say, this seems very exciting to give an alternative to the IB program and really give all of our students who take the AP courses another oomph on their transcripts. Yes, Pam?
Yes, I noticed you have a class. It was called British Literature, and you're changing the title to English Literature. What will be the difference in the two? Because English literature does not necessarily designate that it'll be British literature.
Yes. This State Board of Education each year puts out their approved course list with their descriptions, and the course that we formerly had as British Literature has been changed in the approved courses and the descriptions of those courses to English Literature, and that includes where they would study literature from England, English-speaking countries, England, Ireland, Scotland, New Zealand, Australia, and they would study the literature from different eras. And so, it is -- that is the approved course from the course of study from the State Department.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Great. Well, thank you very much, Dr. Dudley.
Thank you.
Next, we have our workshop topics, and to that, our first, well, I guess our only workshop topic is our literacy program evaluation, and we have a panel of experts, so please begin.
And we are very excited to present to you the Literacy Program Evaluation. The program evaluation has actually been taken on in terms of the Carmel program evaluation. And so, we have been conducting studies involving our district and Dr. McFarland and how --
Dr. McFarland and Dr. Thompson are here to share the findings from our program of study, or our literacy program evaluation, and our recommendations. So, I'll turn it over to Dr. McFarland.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to share with you the most recent results from our 2012-2013 literacy program evaluation. You may be wondering, why does our district engage in the process of program evaluation? About five years ago, the district went through the Advanced Ed District Accreditation Process, and at that time, we received several commendations from Advanced Ed telling us about the things that the district did very well, and these are things that are frankly very unique to the Carmel Clay School District. And you can see these up here. The Quality Assurance Review Team commends the Carmel Clay Schools for, first of all, the systemic process of program evaluation, which provides a research basis for instructional decisions regarding district priorities and actions. We have had this process in place for about 15 years. We go through on every one of our content areas and conduct these program evaluations, but also, we conduct program evaluations for some of our programs. And I know some of you on the dais have participated in these program evaluations in the past, and we appreciate that. Notice also that Advanced Ed commended us for continuous learning that's expected and valued for all staff members within our district, and the expectation clearly supports the ongoing improvement of teaching and learning, as well as the capabilities of the district to sustain continuous improvement. So, those last words, continuous improvement, that's what we're all about, and that's why we undertake the process of program evaluation. So, here's our process. You can see, we begin with program evaluation. From there, we move into curriculum development and/or revision. From there, to material selection and our adoptions. From there, we go to curriculum implementation. It's a recursive process, and at the heart of that sits professional development, as we all know. And at any phase within our cycle, we're involved in professional development. The professional development informs next steps, and again, it's very recursive. And as changes come to us from the State Department, for instance, the implementation of Common Core state standards in Indiana, sometimes we have to break our process. We have to jump in here or there, revise our curriculum, develop curriculum, just in response to the various things that come down from our state and from other areas. But, in the end, we know that this is truly about our students, and that's why we engage in the process of program evaluation, and we know that their academic success, the continuous improvement on behalf of them, but also their well-being, thinking of the whole student, their social and emotional well-being, is at the heart of what we do. So, here's our process. We determine progress towards meeting our original program evaluation recommendations. The last one was done in 2005, and we'll talk about those recommendations in just a minute. Then, we study the professional literature. We identify programming exemplars. If we could have the very best program in the world, what would it look like based on what the professional literature is telling us? Then, we formulate questions of inquiry for our evaluation process. We collect and analyze any pertinent data that we have. We conduct focus group discussions. We look at internal and external student achievement data. We looked at SFS, Long and Short Observation Narratives and the scripting, did keyword searches. We look at walkthrough observations, and we looked at the Advanced Ed survey results for teachers, for students, and for administrators and parents in our district. Then, we triangulate that data to identify strengths, trends, areas of concern. We compare our data findings, after looking at all of that, to the programming exemplars from the literature review. From there, we formulate recommendations for next steps to support that continuous improvement process that's unique to our district, that we believe is so important. Then, we report those findings and our recommendations to the Board, which brings us here tonight, and then we act on the recommendations. So, here are the 2005 recommendations. I've highlighted some of the language so we can whip through these fairly quickly, but we began with the need for a balanced literacy program in our district. We wanted to have common language, shared understandings, evidence-based practices across the grades, K through 12, and also including early childhood. The second recommendation spelled that out in a little bit more detail, but implemented with fidelity are the words you see that there that probably pop out, and a lot of you, that will resonate, the teacher's era here. And we were looking at implementing those programs, those understandings, all of those pieces with fidelity across our schools and across the levels. And then, at each level, we knew we needed common materials and assessments. We know we needed professional development and opportunities for collaboration for our teachers and our administrators that embedded professional development is so important. And then, we knew also that we wanted to assist parents in supporting and encouraging their child's literacy growth. We knew we needed to develop formative and summative assessments or identify those assessments so we could use those to inform our instruction. We know we needed explicit and targeted interventions in the area of literacy. And finally, we know that literacy instruction needed to be pervasive in our content areas as well. So, that was a long list of recommendations. And as we reflect back on what we've done, we've talked to administrators, teachers have reviewed the recommendations. Over the past many years, we've worked very hard, teachers have worked very hard in our district to implement all of those findings. And actually, we've made quite a bit of progress in that area, and I think you'll see in just a bit that the data will bear that out. The one area we would say that we probably haven't made as much movement in as we need to is number seven, which is literacy in the content areas. And we know it's a common core or the Indiana College and Career Readiness Standards, or whatever it is our state decides we'll be having over the next year, that we'll be having a focus on literacy in the content areas. So, that's a recommendation that will probably move forward. All right. So, the literature review was conducted, several people, many people, took a look at the literature. We looked at peer-reviewed research articles. We looked at large meta-analyses from government, from various not-for-profit institutions. We looked at literature from some of the renowned authors in the area. We summarized that literature, and we brought it all together, and we condensed it ultimately into 18 key findings, and I've compacted that a little bit more for you here tonight. And so, here's what we found in terms of what the literature tells us makes for a really exemplary literacy program across all of the levels and all of the disciplines. First of all, we know it needs to be comprehensive, and it needs to be well-coordinated and articulated, and that's early childhood through 12th grade. We know it needs to be balanced, and that it should reflect the gradual release of responsibility. We're glad the literature says that because we worked hard on that in our district. It should be daily authentic reading and writing experiences for students, very student-focused, highly engaging, including reading and writing in the core disciplines and the various content areas. Purposeful engagement and authentic discussion to enhance reading and writing achievement, as well as the acquisition of knowledge. We need high-quality literature and informational text from a wide range of genres and formats in a range of student reading levels. Explicit instruction will be important in the foundational skills, so that means phonemic awareness, phonics, and fluency instruction are still highly important for our students. We know we will need explicit comprehension strategy instruction, and teachers sitting here will know that this will piggyback directly on the wonderful things that we have been implementing in our classrooms. Further, we know we need opportunities to develop that rich background in disciplinary vocabulary. In addition to academic vocabulary, those tiers, one, two, and three of vocabulary, necessary to comprehend a range of texts across all the subjects. We know our students will need close reading experiences to learn how to extract and use evidence to support arguments and claims. We know we have to focus on the writing process in our instruction, and it should reflect a variety of genres, as well as opportunities to use writing to deepen knowledge and understanding in response to texts, inquiry, and discussion. We will need differentiated instruction, that's responsive to individual learner needs, included responsive guided reading instruction. Explicit intervention embedded in meaningful literacy contexts. The integration of technology and online resources, those are our all-important 21st century skills. And finally, last but not least, the high-quality differentiated professional development that's aligned with district goals and embedded in daily practice. If we could have everything in the world in terms of what the literature tells us that makes an exemplary program, that would be it. So, once we pulled all the literature together and came up with those key exemplars, then to continue the program evaluation, we have to have questions of inquiry. So, here are the questions of inquiry that we crafted before we went into the data to extract and analyze it. We said, first of all, how effective is literacy instruction as measured by student achievement in reading and writing? Second question of inquiry, do all Carmel Clay students receive a guaranteed and viable literacy curriculum? And the sub-question for that, to what extent does classroom instruction align with district adoptions, curricula, and our instructional initiatives? Third, how responsive to students' needs are current instructional practices? To what extent does instruction reflect evidence-based practice? To what extent are students engaged in instruction? And what classroom structures are in place to support responsive instruction? The fourth question was, how effectively do teachers use formative assessment data to inform their literacy instruction? And finally, how effective are our interventions in improving students' reading achievement? So, using those questions at the inquiry, we move on to our summary of findings, and I'll turn the mic over to Dr. Thompson.
Well, I'm pretty excited to be able to tell you what we found because we found some really stellar data that I think speaks volumes on behalf of all the teachers and administrators and staff in the district that have worked very hard over the last five years. Just to reiterate a little bit of what Dr. McFarland said, we did collect quite a bit of data, and you'll see that we collected primarily student achievement data from 2008 to 2013. That is because in 2008, that was the first year that we were able to collect data after our last program evaluation and the changes that we implemented on the basis of that and our last adoption in literacy. And so, that 2008 year was really kind of a turning point for us. So, we really looked at the last five years of data, and so, we looked at that both current data and longitudinal data. We had 312 participants in our focus or discussion groups last year. As Dr. McFarland mentioned, we did keyword searches, teacher observation scripts. This involved 109 randomly selected long and short observations that were done by school administrators. We also used 128 classroom walkthrough visits that were conducted by administrators. And then, we used the data from Standard Three of the Advanced Ed survey that was just conducted in September, and that was on teaching and assessing for learning. And that was 670 staff responses and over 3,000 parent responses. So, we feel like this really was giving us a very good, clear snapshot of what instruction looks like, what concerns are, what trends are, and so forth. So, going back to, and again, I just want to reiterate, going back to some of the things that Dr. McFarland listed that we did as a result of program evaluation, we were able to see a very direct correlation between implementation of several of those, particularly the balanced literacy implementation, a guaranteed and viable curriculum that was implemented with fidelity, common assessment materials, explicit interventions. Those were the things that we really worked on first, and teachers really spent a lot of time and hard work doing those things, and we can see here that it's paid off. Our achievement has increased significantly since 2008, and I can tell you, as a 26-year veteran of this district, these are the most stellar improvement results we've had in the 26 years that I have been here. So, we're really proud and really want to congratulate all the teachers that are in the room because it really is their effort. We have pages and pages of data, for those of you who, you know, are maybe data nerds and just really like this, but for those of you who may not be, I'm just going to give you the quick and dirty summary. Kindergarten, we looked at this across several measures, including our DRA and our DIBBLES, and we see that in five years, the student, number of students who were at or above grade level in reading has increased from 68% to 91%. That's pretty phenomenal. That data then is backed up by our DIBBLES composite, which we only have one-year data on because the measure changed a year ago, but 92% on, met the same criteria at or above grade level expectations. In third grade, where we can look at our ISTEAP results, our pass rate increased from 91% to 97% in five years. And those of you who remember any of your statistics courses from college know that once you hit that 90% mark, it gets increasingly more difficult to make gains as you narrow the distance between where you are and 100%. Not only did we have considerably more students passing, but our pass plus increased from 24% to 38%. In sixth grade, our results weren't quite as strong. As you may know, our sixth-grade program is a humanities program, so it's a combination of language arts and literacy. And so, we, I think, have learned some things from this that we need to also investigate, but still, results that any district would love to have. Our pass rate only increased 1%, but our pass plus did increase from 18% to 46% in pass plus, which is pretty phenomenal. And that was corroborated by our REEDs, Reading Comprehension Test, and the number of students performing at or above grade level on that rose from 53% to 84%. So, again, some really stellar results. And in eighth grade, our ISTEAP pass increased from 90% to 95%, with pass plus moving from 12% to 28%. And again, looking at REEDs, that corroborated that with students at or above grade level, moving from 84% to 93%. So, these are really some stellar results that we can be very proud of as a district. At the high school, we were not maybe as successful in implementing some of the things that we did at the elementary and middle schools with all of the recommendations, and I think that we can see a little bit of that in our results. And we don't have as much data on high school because unfortunately, we don't do as much testing as we do in the elementary and middle school. But, on the three major pieces of data that we collect at the high school, there was some good news and some not-so-good news. The SAT, in looking at it from the 2009-10 year to 11-12, we know that our 11th and 12th grade students' mean critical reading and writing scores were always above and consistently above the national mean, which is outstanding. We have never dropped below the national mean. When we look at just reading, what we see is that our critical reading scores decreased by 4.6 points, which was just slightly greater than a national trend of a decrease in that same time period over three years of four points. So, we're just about on par with the national trend, and none of the experts quite know really what has caused that trend. Our writing scores, though, would be a little bit more of a concern that we'll want to address in the future, and those scores decreased by 12.6 points, which was actually quadruple the national decline rate of three points. So, I think that's something that we'll need to look at in our curriculum and our adoption coming up here. Looking at the SAT, which far fewer of our students take, we found that our reading scores actually did trend upward by 1.1 point, I'm sorry, 1.1 points, and that the national mean remained constant. So, we were pretty much on par there nationally, and in both cases, nationally and locally, our writing scores remained constant as well. So, no improvement, but no decline. And lastly, when we look at the Grade 10 English Graduation Qualifying Exam, over the last three years, our high school students' total pass rate did increase from 92% to 95%, and that included 8% in pass plus, and regressed to 95% with 16% in pass plus. And our DNP, or our Did Not Pass Rate, did drop from 7% to 5%, so we've made some progress there. One area that we have really focused on in the last few years because the number of students in our ENL population has grown pretty dramatically, actually, since 2008, that population has grown by 45% in our district, to the point where we now serve 54 different languages. But, the good news is that our percentage of ENL students who pass ISTEAP has increased from 44% to 64%, a 20-point gain, which was pretty phenomenal. A couple of things that happened in that time period. In 2008-2009, the program coordination became a district-level responsibility, and then, in the following year, in 2009-2010, we saw implemented some systematic and systemic changes across the district, and we think that those are positively correlated to the increase in students passing ISTEAP in 2010. One of our questions of inquiry dealt directly with responsive instruction and student engagement. And what we found, and this was primarily through our discussion focus groups and our Advanced Ed surveys, was that evidence of the gradual release of responsibility, which we've worked on for about the last three years in the district, was found during walkthrough visits on, in a third to a half of the classrooms that were visited. In our secondary schools, we did not observe much differentiated responsive instruction, although overall, looking at elementary and secondary, the majority of lessons were responsive to students' needs. It's just that the percentage of responsiveness decreased significantly when we got to secondary. So, and again, that's another area that we can focus on and work to improve. When we looked at some of the classroom structures -- When we looked at some of the classroom structures, what we found was that when teacher-led small groups were observed, these were characterized by an increased evidence of responsiveness. However, that structure was observed less frequently than were other structures. So we know that teacher-led groups are very effective in providing responsive instruction in this district, however, they're not used as often as other structures are. When we looked at peer-driven small groups or collaborative groups where the students were directing themselves, this was one of the most frequently observed structures that we found, K-12. However, it was characterized by significantly less responsiveness to student needs. So we're seeing sort of a reverse of what we would like to see, maybe more of the highly responsive teacher-led groups and maybe less of the collaborative groups that were less responsive. Administrators indicated a need for additional professional development for teachers in the use of formative data for more responsive instruction. And we found that in approximately half of all the classrooms observed, at least 15% of students were not actively engaged. So engagement looks to be something that we will want to work on in the future as well. No surprise here, when we collected much of our data last year, this was the first year of implementation of Common Core standards in the district in most grade levels and so most of the concerns were about the Common Core curriculum. And we found that teachers and administrators really expressed that need for more understanding, a deeper understanding of what the standards mean and how to teach them. They also noted that these standards require a great deal more classroom time and teacher expertise and effort in order to help kids meet those standards. Teachers actually expressed a need for more and better and differentiated curricular materials, which is perfect timing because this year we were starting on curriculum adoption. So we'll hopefully take care of that need. And lastly, teachers indicated that more time and opportunity for collaborative professional development was needed in support of literacy. So that leads us to recommendations and we don't have a long list like we did last time. It's actually a little more succinct. We have five major recommendations that should guide our work for the next six years based on the data we found and the program exemplars that were researched. And the first is to build upon what we already have started with a K-12 balanced literacy framework, but build on that by doing a couple of very specific things. Deepening our understanding of Common Core standards, developing that common language of those standards and a shared understanding, and a focus on some very specific, high-yield, evidence-based practices. You may say, "Well, wow, you just talked about how great our student achievement is," and it is great, but what we know is that once you get to that high level, the main way that the research will tell you that you can increase students' achievement even further is to increase the amount of time that they spend reading and writing each day. So that would be one practice that we would want to work on over the next six years. Secondly, to bring forward number seven from the last program evaluation, which is that underpinning content area instruction with disciplinary literacy practices. That's one that Dr. McFarland mentioned we didn't make as much progress in last time. Thirdly, to focus on embedding disciplinary vocabulary into all content area instruction, not just literacy instruction. Looking at close reading, which is very much coming out of the research that Common Core was based on. And lastly, to take those comprehension strategies that we've really been focusing on over the last six years and looking at those as flexible tools that students can pick and choose among as they read across multiple texts. So just refining that a bit. Our second recommendation was to continue the work we've done on gradual release of responsibility because it is so well-supported by the research, to support more differentiated and responsive instruction. Bullets under that, focusing on the use of formative data, as was indicated in our focus groups discussions, and increasing the use of teacher-led small group instruction at all levels. It's found very frequently at the elementary level, but not as frequently at the secondary level. And then providing opportunities and structure for collaboration and among teachers, helping them to see how to provide collaborative small group experiences that are more meaningful for students and more rigorous. The third recommendation was to promote active student engagement in classroom instruction and I think any visitor from outside the district that went through our district would say, "Well, gee, your kids really look engaged because they're all sitting there quietly." But when we actually look at whether or not they're actively engaged in what they're doing, minds on learning, that's another story. And so shooting for the very best that we can provide our students, this is an area that we want to definitely increase our time and efforts on. Our fourth recommendation is to provide literacy teachers with job embedded opportunities for collaboration and professional learning, to continue what we started and enhance that where we can. And that brings us to our next steps. And as Dr. McFarland said, our next steps in our recursive cycle, our curriculum, I'm sorry, material selection, and the elementary committee has already started on that and our secondary committee starts tomorrow. And so we continue the process. So does anyone on the board have any questions, comments, or concerns?
Well, thank you very much for a very comprehensive review of what you've been working on this last year and really incorporating the years of research and evidence-based data to kind of support these recommendations. I will open it up to the board for discussion.
Yeah, please excuse me, I do have quite a few questions. First of all, going back to the beginning of your presentation, you talked about focus groups, discussions. Can you tell me who participated in the focus groups and did you ask for teacher input? Did you send information out to people to ask them to come to participate in the focus groups?
We actually did that a little bit differently this year and I think as Dr. Dudley mentioned when she introduced the presentation, because last year was a very difficult year, let's say, based on the implementation of RISE, the Common Core curriculum, and so forth, and we did not want to pull a lot of teachers out unnecessarily. So what we did was make use of structures that we had in place. And so that data was collected from elementary lead teachers at their meetings and we have five lead teachers per building that were in attendance and so when they would have discussions and collect data, we used that. Media specialists were also a part of that. The high school English teachers had department discussions. There were some focus group discussions held at the middle school department meetings and then that information, their responses were sent over here. We also made use of department chair meetings and assistant principals and principal meetings, admin meetings, and that sort of thing. So altogether, we-
Sure, go ahead. Come in, jump right in.
Altogether, we had 312 different participants.
Last year also, we were fortunate enough to have teachers, all grade-level teachers from third, fourth, and fifth grade, come to ESC for professional development on the Common Core changes and how to integrate those into curriculum. And as part of that, we had teachers in small groups responding to questions and sharing out their responses. So those responses were also captured in this, so all third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers.
Okay, thank you. When you mentioned the fact in your recommendations that these should be implemented with fidelity and balance appropriate to the level taught, could you please explain that statement about following with fidelity?
Are you talking about the program exemplars?
Mm-hmm.
I think what the, I'll let Martha maybe refer to that, but I think what that really was talking about is implementing with fidelity the best practices of a balanced literacy framework that we know to be effective. And I'll let her expedite on that.
Yes, the adopted materials, at least at elementary level, went along with our structure for balanced literacy, so we had certain components of balanced literacy in place. So teachers were keeping the structures of balanced literacy in place and then using those adopted materials to meet the needs of their students. And where those materials were not necessarily meeting the needs of their students within the structure of the balanced literacy framework, we added supplemental materials that they could use as well. So teachers had some leeway in what they were implementing, but we envisioned fidelity as holding with the whole structure of the balanced literacy framework.
Okay.
Crystal clear?
No. Because I just remember what, as a teacher, when I was in the program, what I understood fidelity to mean at the time, so that's why I'm-
Probably the first year of implementation of Rigby, teachers were using the specific materials that came with their adoption, which brought them into the structures and the practice of doing balanced literacy and all those pieces. Then as we began to implement and we began to use our data to understand, better understand the impact on students and so on, we knew that the evidence base told us the balanced literacy framework was important, but in some cases, we needed to differentiate those materials to better meet the needs of our students. So we expanded the definition of fidelity to move beyond just you must use this little text with your students and you must do this writing lesson to being able to use a wider variety of materials within that balanced literacy framework to be responsive to students' needs.
Okay. Yes, so therefore, are you supplementing the writing program in Rigby with anything else at this time?
We have been. We've been using the Lynda Hoyt Explorations in Writing series and other materials, as well the Lucy Calkins Reading and Writing materials. And again, those are, we use those within the balanced literacy framework, but it gives teachers choices in ways that will supplement what might have been weak in the past adoption with writing.
Okay, when you get down to walkthroughs, how effective is a walkthrough in trying to determine how a teacher teaches in the fact that you walk through a classroom and what may be exhibited at that time may not be what you're looking for, but happens later on in the day or happens later on as the teacher's working? So if you're looking for engagement in a walkthrough and you happen to walk through and the kids are taking a test, how does that work into your percentages? I mean, the kids are engaged, they're taking a test, but I'm just not real clear on how the walkthroughs are.
I think there's a certain limitation that we would all acknowledge to a walkthrough. It's a snapshot in a teacher's day. It is, you know, five or 10 minutes of time out of that teacher's instructional day. And certainly, we wouldn't draw any major conclusions based on one walkthrough about a particular teacher. That would be grossly unfair. However, when you look at many, many walkthroughs across all times of the day, across all disciplines, you begin to get, you begin to see some trends across that data. So I think it really matters how many you're looking at and were they always at the same time of day? When we visit the secondary schools, are you there at the beginning of the period, the middle of the period, or the end of the period? That makes a big difference. Are you there on a test day, you know, or those kinds of things? Are they passing back homework? So it depends on what they're doing and all that's taken into account. But again, it's looking across a large span of data and then seeing what trends are there.
Okay.
And then that's taken in conjunction with all of the other data. Particularly, we looked at the SFS, Teacher Observation Scripts, which by the way, were completely blind, there were no names attached or any of that kind of thing. But those are short and long evaluations and so those long evaluations could be up to 60 minutes long. And so that does give you a nice, again, it's a snapshot in time, one day out of an entire year, and so you begin to look for trends across those.
Okay. I had another question about your high school students and their decline. How many of these high school students have gone all the way through the Carmel schools? Do we have data on that so we can compare students who have gone all the way through the system to students who have entered the system later and maybe aren't trending as well as the students that we've taught all the way through?
That would be good data to look at. That's not something that we pulled, but certainly I think that that would be available with some further study to look at.
Okay.
In general, I would say in the past, when we've looked at data from that light, it is always that the longer the student has been with us, the higher they perform. But we just didn't pull that data this particular time.
Okay. I think that would be an important piece of data to look at when you're considering that. I'll give somebody else a chance?
Well, I have a question, actually a couple. And perhaps I misunderstand what gradual release is, but it seems like the collaborative peer groups are a big component of gradual release. Since our collaborative groups, how did we state it here?
Were not responsive.
Yes. How do you propose that you're going to be turning this around? What type of, I guess, therapy or teaching are we going to be doing with the students?
Well, we actually began this summer at the admin retreat and we spent an entire day looking at best practices in collaborative group structures and how you can structure collaborative group learning so that it is more responsive and very engaging and rigorous for students because that was a concern that principals had expressed last spring during some of their school improvement planning meetings, that that was a concern, that they saw a lot of good small group collaborative learning, which is part of the gradual release and an important part, but that they didn't feel it was rigorous, not necessarily engaging for all students, and so they want us to address that. So we started there with some training with them to begin building that background and our hope would be to be continuing that professional development to teachers in the future.
And actually, we have continued in that vein, so elementary lead teachers, that's their theme for this year. And we've already begun with the first session, working on collaborative learning structures, both for adults, but also for the students. And I know that secondary department chairs will continue in that same way. So it's a huge district focus this year is working on that collaborative learning.
Great, thank you.
And that's before we actually had the data.
Well, I appreciate that because I feel like that is definitely an area that teachers certainly need support, students need support. Gosh, I've been in many a groups that adults need support in that area. So at any rate, the other question that I had for you, I guess it's the fifth, sixth bullet point. Administrators perceive the need for additional focus on responsive instruction and use of formative assessments. I feel like we do a lot of formative assessments already and if I, looking at this, you know, blindly, I initially think, "Wow, do we have more time? I mean, we're pressuring teachers already to get so much accomplished." Formative assessments means more tests in a parent's view or as a teacher's view. Help me understand what this really means.
That's actually a very good question and again, I kind of gave you the down and dirty, but when you really dig into the data and the comments that were made, that were recorded in all the different focus groups and discussions that we mentioned earlier, it is not doing more formative assessment. Principals and assistant principals would be the first to say that we're doing lots of formative assessment, but what they would also say is not all teachers know how to use that to inform their instruction and drive what they're doing, either in the moment or the next day, say, to adjust lesson planning. So it's not that they don't feel teachers are doing it, they know teachers are doing it, it's just to enhance it and make it more effective.
Kathy?
When middle and high school classrooms are observed, is it noted how large the classes are in terms of differentiative and responsive instruction and teacher-led instruction groups, small groups, how that works in a class of 30 to 35?
I wouldn't say that we noted, no. We didn't note the size of the class.
So could that have been a factor in some of them?
It could be. I feel like I was kind of on the witness stand.
Sorry, I was just, my mind goes around in circles a lot and people normally know that, but I was just, I'm just thinking that a lot of times when you're collecting data, I mean, we have walkthroughs and as you said, a walkthrough is a real short snapshot.
Absolutely.
To be, data to be accurate, we'd have to have thousands and thousands and thousands of walkthroughs to get any real accurate information, but I agree that you can see trends.
Right. And from a math teacher's perspective, that's exactly right. We would have need thousands, but we just didn't have that large of a sample size. And, but you know, I would say informally, yes, did we notice those things? Absolutely. But again, going back to, you know, statistics, you can't necessarily draw that conclusion without other pieces with it. So we tried to keep our conclusions so that they- So we tried to keep our conclusions so that they were drawn specifically to the data that we had and not read anything more into them. But go with the things that we could directly correlate in one way or another.
And we also might note that the full program evaluation will be available off of the district website. And there, I think you'll be able to see some of the triangulated statements. So you'll see from focus group, from teacher, you know, survey data, perhaps then from walkthrough. When we saw data coming from various points in the triangulation leading to the same kind of trend, then that made us feel a bit more comfortable about looking at something as either a strength or maybe an area for more investigation or an area of concern.
Mrs. Heckit?
Thanks to my fellow board members for asking a lot of my questions. But one that remains in the slide that talked about Common Core State Standard presents new challenges. And one area that it mentioned was the teachers indicated a need for time and opportunity for professional development and support in literacy. It seems that over the years, we always grapple with professional development, what time, what's the most effective, what one person might think is effective and another. Did this evaluation process, I don't know, give any other ideas or any other trends of new things we're trying or old things that we're finding ones more effective than? Are there anything in that professional development area you found?
I can speak from the elementary level. We had input from lead teachers after our January 7th Professional Development Day, last year, reflection on the process and comments consistently from lead teachers about the fact that it was school-based, that lead teachers and other teacher leaders in the building had materials prepared ahead of time from which they could select. Then they had the leeway to customize it, customize based on the interests and the needs of the building. And that there was a lot of time for teachers to work collaboratively. Again, in small groups, we know the power of that collaboration. And that it's very specific to what they teach, the level they teach, and it's embedded. And we hear frequently from teachers, that whole idea of being very embedded in their classroom, with their peers, on their team, that kind of thing is so important to them. The instructional specialists, we hear a lot that that's very, and a very effective structure for helping to support teachers. And again, the differentiation piece so that we have a variety of options available. Because as you said, the same size doesn't fit all, and we know that.
Thanks.
I can speak to that just really quickly from the secondary perspective as well. What we do know is that the high school teachers very much value the PLC time that they have when we have the late start about twice a month. That is when they are able to collaborate with their peers on the specific course that they're teaching, depending on which PLC they're in. And they've found that to be extremely effective. And in fact, most of them would probably support having those more frequently. And at the middle school, I would say that right now, they are the group that doesn't have any job embedded collaboration time. We have it at the elementary. We have PLC time at the high school. And the middle school teachers are feeling that pinch. You talked about past practices. We did have teaming several years ago. And that was where you met with your whole team of science, math, language arts. And that was valuable, but what they would say is that didn't help me become better at my content. And so what they want is time to collaborate with people at their grade level in their content area. And so that's something we're working on figuring out how to do and provide for them. It's important.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ms. Nouse?
Yes. Thank you, Tricia, because that was one of my questions. I was wondering, I know that the elementary has collaboration time built in. I know that that was taken away from the middle school. So I was trying, and the PLCs are evident at the high school. But I was concerned about the middle school and how you're going to work that into their schedule.
We're all concerned about that, but we're working on it.
Okay. My other question is on recommendation number three. You have use technology to connect and expand literacy experiences. How are we progressing with technology and its use in the classroom? And are we offering opportunities for teachers to use technology in their subjects?
Well, the major advance that I would say we've made in the last year is that the IT department has expanded our local network so that we have a lot more bandwidth, so that we can actually accommodate many, many students, literally thousands of students on the internet at the same time. So that's kind of been couched in the phrase BYOD, bring your own device. Right now, the school district doesn't have the funding to support a one-to-one initiative. But certainly, the literature would tell you that there is much to be gained by allowing students to bring a device from home that they're familiar with and that they can operate. And as long as it has internet connection, they can get right onto our network. They can get to their own H-drive. And so there's a lot of work that students can do that way. And the teachers who are trying it are finding success. It's growing slowly. And Leslie Karpik, our technology instructional assistant, or instructional specialist, is helping teachers upon request with that. And we're continuing to try to encourage that because it is much supported by the literature.
Okay. So teachers know that they can have their students bring their own device to school?
They should know. Yes. It's been publicized and...
Yes. And it's also in all of our handbooks, our policies in our handbooks as far as the students bringing their own devices and what that could look like at the different levels.
Okay. I have one more question to piggyback on that because I did find this very interesting and I'm very excited that that really is one of the recommendations coming from the administration. Where my question is, having a tool, if it's not embedded in the curriculum, it's just like having another paper and pencil. So are we writing curriculum that's supporting the use of the technology? Or can you speak to that, please?
Actually, in the context of this program evaluation, we were looking at the use of technology in the context of literacy instruction. And the use of technology is embedded throughout the Common Core standards. So it's not just, this would be nice to do if you have some time. It is literally embedded in what the outcomes are of the Common Core standards, particularly in the higher level standards, seven, eight, and nine of the reading standards, as well as the writing standards and speaking and listening standards.
Now, does it specifically say how to use it or give ideas?
It does not.
Because I would think it would be very open-ended. Technology doesn't mean much to me if it does, if I don't have some, you know, underlying support.
And understanding that, the Common Core standards are learning outcomes for students. They're not a how to get there. Just as, you know, people have said, well, the comprehension strategies are not, you know, specifically stated in Common Core. They're not because that's a tool that you use to get to the outcome of being able to read. And so if you look at the standards, what they ask students to do are things like specifically research and evaluate your resources, your sources, your source of information for validity and credibility, to compare information across multiple texts and multiple platforms, multiple media. And so those are standards seven and nine in particular. And so it is embedded there as the outcome of what the student should be able to do, but it does not tell the teacher, here's where you need to pull in BYOD. You know, that's left up to the teacher to use their professional expertise then to play those lessons.
And if they have questions on that, what type of support then do we have for the teachers? Can you speak to that again, please?
Sure. We have, Leslie Karpik is our instructional technology integration specialist that works with our teachers. We do provide that on-demand. It's as they need that. Some of our teachers are out there on the cutting edge where they are integrating. And I know Kathy had the chance to come to the expedition this year where we did have several teachers that were sharing different activities that they do with the BYOD technology and integrating that into the curriculum. But it is, I mean, really, the technology is a tool. It is a tool to truly make what our students are learning and put it in more of a global perspective of what you can't do in just a textbook, but you truly have that interactive piece and make things, making that interactive. So it's really integrating it to make that lesson even better. And if I could, I'd like to offer just a little plug too for our media specialists who work very hard to support teachers in their use of technology, but also to integrate technology into the literacy learning experiences of our students, both, you know, with the web 2.0 collaborative environments and the databases and all the things that they do in support of that.
Thank you. Other questions and comments? Well, wonderful. Thank you so very, very much. I really have enjoyed this and I look forward to where we go with this. And next on the agenda is the superintendent's report, district goals. Dr. Wall?
Thank you, Leila. Appreciate that. Here we go. Okay. As we talked about goals and formulated them in the goal-setting session with the School Board Association rep, one of the things we looked at that I suggested is that we have a visual on looking at goals for the district and student-centered decision-making around those goals. This matrix allows us to take a look at that as we formulate goals for 2013-14. Let me first assure the board that, you know, we're coming close to the end of the first quarter. We are doing things at the building level. The buildings have active school improvement plans that are ongoing and we've met with the principals and talked with them about that. Those are consistent and ongoing from years past. They'll be submitted by the November 1 deadline. So all those things are going along as they should be. One thing we're working on this year in reference to school improvement planning is connecting the building school improvement plans to the building principal goals. So there's some connectivity from the school improvement plan to the goals. As we saw earlier this evening, the advanced ed accreditation process is ongoing in our program evaluation that was on display this evening with literacy. That connectivity to the advanced ed, to the school improvement planning, down to the building principal goals, which is something that we're accomplishing this year, makes this a sustainable process. The matrix I'm suggesting that we look at in reference to student-centered decision-making on goals facilitates and supports the existing structure that we have. So we're not reinventing any wheels here. The first quarter is coming to a close. Buildings are actively engaged in their school improvement plans that were established last year. And goal-setting with the teachers is going on accordingly. So I wanted to put that as the entree, that things are going on as they should be. As we look forward and project forward, looking at the goals that we're trying to make good decisions and provide resources for our students, I think this matrix works as a guide for that. When we look at the students in the center, all the things that we do, all the decisions we make with communication with our faculty and staff or facilities and finance all feed into, is this a good decision that will enhance what we do, expand opportunities within the resources we have for our students? That's why we're doing what we do. The circle that goes around this process, this matrix, indicates, as we saw on display tonight with the literacy review, that we're constantly looking at standards in alignment. Now, obviously, we're monitoring what the state of Indiana is doing with the standards as they are pausing on Common Core and looking at the state standards. But that's something that we constantly are aware of as we make these decisions. Also, we want best practice, research-based with information that supports that. And again, I want to reiterate, I'm very impressed that that model is nothing new. We saw that tonight with literacy and I commend the presentation this evening from Amy to Lynda to Martha. That was fantastic because it enhances and supports this model. So again, just another way to process how we're doing what we do. The administrators and the principals have all been engaged in this matrix and looking at and suggesting how we do this process. And the principals have been, and the administrators have been very positive and collaborative on this. As we move forward, I'm going to just highlight the student center. Now, as we go to the student center, as we pull that out, what does that mean when we're talking about decision-making for our students? I presented this at the last principals' meeting and as I indicated to the principals and administrators in the room, this is an evolved model and this strategy map with specific emphasis on student-centered decision-making. I asked them to please provide their insights, feedback, wisdom to this. And I want to point out the Carmel Clay Schools' vision as it relates to the increased student achievement. It matriculates very well with this model and I give Lynda Thompson props for aligning this for all of us. The subheadings were there, but we put them in the order of the mission. Experience excellence, which increase student growth. Explore opportunities, increase student academic opportunities. Increase achievement of underperforming students, realize potential. Line up, I think, very commonsensically to the mission statement and the vision of Carmel Clay Schools. So again, to restate, not reinventing, but putting these in matrix and strategy maps that I think makes sense and all of us can be singing off the same song sheet, so to speak. And again, the good news is, that I've found and I'm very impressed with, is the real dedication to continuous improvement here. I mean, to the point of the last principal meetings where we look at what we do, how we do it, and meetings that we do to accomplish this. You know, my challenge to them is to make sure there's a balance here, a sustainable balance, because everybody's doing quite a bit. And I think a focus with this kind of visual in mind can economize those energies and resources and continue to support this model of continuous improvement. But as you look at the strategy map that connects back to the students being in the center, and I talked about this, you know, the day I stood over at the podium when I was fortunate enough to be appointed, I talked about the balance of student well-being and increased student achievement. This gives that conversation a way to look at it, a connectivity, and also, more importantly, a way to measure it and look at the growth. I presented this strategy map to the principals and what we're doing, this is an active and alive document. What they're doing in each area is looking at increased student well-being and increased student achievement. And our next principal meeting, we're going to share, everyone's going to share, what are the things we're already doing in Carmel Clay Schools, where we are monitoring and looking at the well-being of our students? And by, by common practice, the well-being side initially is a stumbling block in this model. We don't intuitively think of that when we start to think about looking how our students are doing. We generally jump to the increased student achievement side, which is extremely important and a vital measure of how we're doing. We saw it this evening in the presentation. We celebrate the success as measured by the state testing, Istat Plus. But really, that is the, that is the side of this strategy map we jump to. We talk about how well we are doing. And we will continue to stress that by looking at student growth, student academic opportunities, and the increased achievement of underperforming groups. Now, the challenge with that, that I've, that I have put forth to the principals, and I believe they're more than able to be up to that, is the emphasis on a student growth model that we can look at in a K-12 environment. There are models out there that look at that. Yes, it's important that we continue to strive and do our best on the state mandated testing. We will. But we need to be aware that that's a basic skills test. By no means do we think that Carmel Clay Schools should be judged solely on a basic skills test. With the teachers we have in the classroom, the parent support in the community, and the students that are ready to go to a rigorous environment in our classrooms, our mark is higher than a minimum competency test and a basic skills test. And I think everybody knows that. So the model we, that, there are models out there looking at increasing student academic growth. ACT has a model and so does College Board. And yes, the model does matriculate. And yes, the model does matriculate down into the elementary through middle school through high school. Those are models that will be looked at administratively, brought back to the board for consideration this year, to look at a K-12 student growth model that we truly can measure the academic growth as students matriculate through our system. And it can be disaggregated to look at students that are in our system, as Pam, you questioned, K-12 through students that transfer in. Not that that changes the goal, but it does laser in on how are our programs in a K-12 environment? How are our students growing? And that's really what we want to do. Any teacher that brings students into a classroom, and they want to look at how are students doing when they came in, and we do a lot of benchmarking tests, I know, as students come into our various levels, we want to look at how they're growing as a result of the instruction, as a result of the professional development that we administer. All those factors feed into, if we go back to the previous screen, the student center. All those things we do, we need to measure those. So, you'll be seeing and hearing about those growth models, and that is something that we then can have measures that we put standards on. And these standards and benchmarks will be both, obviously, the state, national, and we are looking at international benchmarks as well. And we're actually looking at an international benchmark this year that I became aware of at a CIESC meeting, and then Amy and Brooke went over, Brooke from the high school, to review if this is a viable benchmark, which it is. So, you'll hear more about that. But globally, the student growth model is vital, and the benchmarks that I believe we expect up here, US board members, us as administration, the teachers in the classroom, and the parents, and frankly, the students, they're benchmarking themselves against national and international benchmarks, because, let's be honest, the students that we have in our classrooms, they are going to not only be in a global market, they're going to be leading that in many examples. So, those are some measures you'll be hearing about this year. Will they all be in place this year? Probably not. But the goal is going to be in this, when we have goals and action plans that come back on the 28th, having that model embraced so that we can go into it full stride next year. But I think it's very vital. And as we look at increasing our student academic opportunities and increasing achievement of underperforming groups, the principals will be coming back and sharing, what are we currently doing to meet those areas under increased student achievement now? We're doing many, many things. And I think the exciting thing that I've seen in the principals, they're sharing this with each other, and very impressed with their collaboration among each other, among And obviously, I'm learning a lot about Carmel Clay Schools. I think we all are, which I think is exciting, because my end objective is to continue to build administrative leadership teams that work together and collaboratively, because we have, you know, some of the best and brightest, not only in the state, but nationally, right here, in our classrooms and in leading our buildings and leading our administration. So, opportunities to share and to work together. They'll come back and share all those ideas at the next principal meeting, which is upcoming. As we go over to the increased student well-being, where we don't naturally jump to, all of us that were teachers, though, and still consider myself a teacher and a parent, you think about, okay, what's the well-being of our students? Well, what does that mean, and how do you measure that? You know, as a parent, the first thing you want to know is if your son or daughter isn't enjoying going to school. Okay. Then, obviously, you want to know how they're performing or achieving with, above their ability level, within their ability level, or if they're underperforming, why is that? So, that goes into the increased student well-being. The student engagement, very interesting, that came out in the literacy presentation. Linda and I talked after the meeting. How do we measure student engagement? There are some ways that they did with their literacy review. There are some ways that we currently measure and may not even know we are. At all levels, we look at students. We want to increase their student engagement. One way to do that is to decrease, I call them, office and discipline referrals. Any referral away from instruction, that takes away from their student opportunity to engage and learn. And many things were done, are being done in our buildings every day to increase students engaging, staying in class. That seems basic and simplistic, but I'm sure when you did the block schedule review to adopt it at the high school, that was a significant factor, because when you're engaging them in this structure and minimizing the times they're moving about the building, you're increasing student engagement, and that's a large byproduct of block schedule at a high school. Those are things we have in place already. We just need to look at what we're measuring and be very thoughtful about what we're looking at. You'll be hearing about and considering options to systematically survey our students and instruments that we can consistently look at over time as they matriculate through our schools. And I don't mean surveys that we write, because we're not survey writers. We're many things, educators, but one thing is we're not generally, you know, statisticians to look at the surveys that we write, because unfortunately, they come across as biased and, you know, not reliable and valid. There are ways to do that, and there are ways to systematically look at that, so we can look at how are our students feeling about their experiences in our schools? There are ways to do that for our faculty and staff, too, and that's vital, too. Not only are we concerned about our students, but we're concerned about, you know, the faculty and staff, well-being as well, and administration. That's one of the points I brought up at the principals' meeting. After I looked at the vast array of meetings they were doing, I think actually someone said, you know, I guess we should look at our own well-being. I said, yeah, I think that's a healthy practice to keep that balance. The other thing that this strategy map does, it does give us the feeling of a balance as we look at what is this student-centered approach to goal-setting mean? Because when you're looking at it with just one side of the map, the student achievement, you're not in balance. But when you look at it in conjunction with the well-being of our students, you have a shot at achieving more of a balance. And then we talk about increased social-emotional learning. That matriculates right into what they're looking for in the college and career readiness, 21st century workforce skills, because what we're talking about there is, again, measurable, if we're, you know, looking at those things. And what we're hearing from employers is they're looking for a skill set in our students, the social-emotional learning, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, ability to build relationships and work cooperatively with others, and responsible decision-making. Those are the areas they're looking for. And then also, in college and career readiness, they're looking for our students' ability of, how are they thinking? How are they working? What tools for working? Skills for living in the world, in the global economy? Ability to collaborate and work with others and problem-solve? Those are the kind of things that, in increasing student well-being and increasing social-emotional awareness and learning, those are the things that employers are looking for. Now, I'm not suggesting a separate curriculum. I mean, much like Leila said about embedding these practices, those are practices, as we look at the evolving of increasing social-emotional awareness, can be embedded in our curriculum, those kind of behaviors that our teachers probably intuitively already know. And by no means am I insulting our classroom teachers. I'm sure they know them. But to embed them in what we do in practice and to support our teachers in professional development, it may or may not need, but the awareness and the measurement of these, we can do that. And I think as we look at this together, administrators and teachers, those kind of evolutionary discussions, practices, and then shared measurements, because obviously it's going to be internal measures and external measures that we celebrate, will guide us in making these student-centered decisions. So, as this evolves, and I'm very encouraged by the principals and administrator engagement in coming back, and I'm very excited and anticipating what they're going to share next principal meeting, how are we measuring all these things now? And I'll obviously be monitoring that and reporting back to you as this evolves, but back to my opening statement. School improvement plans are happening. They're being implemented. We're going to connect our principal goals to those this year. We're getting things done. This is a process that we're laying out, and I feel very encouraged by the energy being generated from it, so we can chart out and have that kind of synergy we're looking for where everyone is, you know, working collaboratively, moving toward the student-centered decision-making that we have. And again, this year, again, not doing these things in isolation, we are in our year of accreditation, and Amy has organized that, and I appreciate all her leadership in that area. As we look at the various areas in the advanced ed, it interfaces very well with this model. And again, it's not to reinvent. It's not to change what we're doing. It's frankly geared to streamline it and get it all in one place and see the dynamic growth that we're having and celebrate that and continue to support this continuous improvement model that I'm so excited that is in place here. And I believe it's the advanced ed that kind of interjected that continuous improvement model into the district. And again, frankly, I'm sure it was already an intuitive piece of what we were doing anyway. Yeah. It's a tradition of excellence, and I think that we see it in the classroom every day, and we see it in our students and our teachers. And I don't see pushback from this, but I do see us doing it with people and looking at how we're doing, what we're doing, and celebrating that and sharing that, as I am this evening, this concept. So, as this evolves, I'll go back to the previous. As this evolves, that student center is where we were, we'll be looking at goals under communication, faculty, staff, facilities, finance, that all support the student-centered model that we just pulled out of there a second ago. And as we look at what we're doing, if it's not supported by scientifically research-based and information and aligning with the standards, then it's not an initiative that we would move forward with. That's kind of our guiding parameters around our goals and what we're doing. And I think that's an excellent guide. And again, by all my observations and work in the presentation tonight, as you saw, the research base and best practice and standards is alive and well in CCS, and I've learned a lot just by listening to the presentations and the administrators that we have. But again, it just fits hand in glove with this model. So, look forward to sharing the goals on the 28th, you know, with the board and the community. And again, that will be enhancing what we're continuing to do with our SIPS, but it'll be our, it's charting the course going forward is the best way I can put it.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Wall. Open for discussion. Mr. Phillips?
I really appreciate the idea of balance for our students. I think that's such a refreshing thing to see, particularly in this day and age where there's so much emphasis on academic excellence. And it's hard to have that academic excellence if the child's hurting in some other area in his life. So, I think that's just a great thing. And Dr. Wall, I also really appreciate that you've isolated these other things that sometimes slip from view, like facilities, and particularly our staff. Our staff, as I've been reading my fan mail here, staff is very important to how well these kids do, and so it makes abundant good sense that we should, you know, focus our attention on staff and helping them to be comfortable and productive as we go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Others?
Okay. Well, I do want to just piggyback off of what Mr. Phillips said. We, I think, as a board, and this is one of the reasons we selected you, is your, the student-centered approach and the balance that you bring between academic achievement as well as social-emotional growth. I look forward to learning how we're going to measure the social-emotional growth. That seems very ambiguous, and further defining that would be great. Thank you.
I look forward to working with the administrators as we develop those measures and educate ourselves on those measures, and then share that, obviously, with the board and get your feedback. Because as you look at the wellness measures, it's not always as intuitive, and it's not always as natural. So, there's going to be some discussion if these are the values that we have and we want to measure those. So, it gets into a little, an area that we're not as familiar with. So, I would invite open discussion and open dialogue on that so that we're comfortable with those measures. And we'll take it one step at a time.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it looks like we are now... Any board reports, any board comments for this evening?
Great. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming this evening. I hope you have an enjoyable October break with your family. Meeting adjourned.